Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I would like to call the Tuesday morning 12th City Council meeting to order. I'd like to invite anyone that wishes to join. The council has been brought for our indication, called up. Pledge of allegiance. I'll invite our freshman member of council to deliver the dedication.
Dear Lord, thank you for bringing us here today, God, with your protection and your grace, Jesus, to allow us to do your work on today. God, I welcome a new member to the City Council of Hartsville. God, I pray that we will continue to govern this city, God, and do the work that you've called us to do to the best of our ability, protect us, the rest of us throughout this day, our Girl Scouts, our Women of Appreciation, and everything in between. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, a one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, please proceed. Okay, at this time, the chair will entertain a motion to waive the reading approved amendment of February 12, 2019, very good City Council meeting.
Motion to the floor.
It's very discussion. Very good in all favor, City Council, but we say no. Close the Senate. Moving into item four on our agenda is item A, certification of the 2019 special election results. Item clerk?
This commander, as reported by Hope Campbell, the director of the elections in Darlington County, and the county conducts our elections for us, and we're so grateful for that, was unable to be here tonight, so he asked me to give his report. And the following official certified special election results from the February 19 special election for Council District Six, for Kathy Franklin, there were 34 votes cast, for Bobby McGee, there were 159 votes cast, and the successful candidate to be confirmed by his City Council, or City Council District Six, would be Bobby McGee.
Okay. Do we need a motion to certify?
Sorry, you just made this I said.
Without objection, do you object? Without objection from the freshman member of council. In the next three minutes span, certify. At this time, we would pass our newly elected freshman member of council to come and join us now with his lovely eyes, and any guests that you have with you. Come on. Please. They're gonna come standing right here if you want. And they're gonna take a picture. Okay, if you'll repeat. I do solemnly swear or affirm that I am duly qualified according to the Constitution of this state, exercise the duties of office to which I have been elected, and that I will to the best of my ability discharge the duties thereof, and preserve, protect, and defend the Constitution of this state, and of the United States, so help me God. As council member of the municipality of Hartsville, I will equally, fairly, and impartially to the best of my ability and skill exercise the trust proposed in me, and I will use my best endeavors to preserve the peace and carry into effect according to the law the purposes for which I have been elected, so help me God. Congratulations. Let me get inside, please.
I didn't have time to iron my face.
I just signed for you, so it is now, no, not yet. Madam Councilwoman, it is your pleasure to move down a seat. Okay. And it is so ordered. Madam, Mr. Corner, youngest council member ever to serve in the history of the United States, it is your pleasure to move a seat. And so ordered. And our newest freshman member of council, you are now, as it has been customary in the last 125 years, according to the historian, to sit in this high of your chair, so we can keep a close eye on you, and train you upright, as they say.
You're some earful, don't get on your dish.
Just a matter of housekeeping, these are my men's. I have the privilege of using your water from time to time. And you see what Trey did to you? He lowered his seat, and you can see it. It was the best. Man, you're good. Johnny used to do that to me all the time. I'd come in here and Johnny'd pop that thing down. All right. Is there anything that you would like to say to address council for the official record? Well, this is your first meeting.
To simply say to everyone, I am grateful. I look forward to serving the people in this great city and doing everything we can to make it more vibrant than it is, just keep attracting people here and keep the good things going. I appreciate all of you.
Wonderful. Thank you, sir. We will certainly get you settled on committee of silence, and manager will get you up to speed. And the clerk, as we mentioned on the phone, is a wonderful valuable resource, and she keeps us moving forward and straight. Okay, now, best part of the program, I understand that the Girl Scouts are here.
Yes, we are.
Are there Girl Scouts here?
Yes, we are.
I don't see any girls.
Yeah. We're here.
Come on down, I mean, come on down. Come back up here. Not many people are gonna come back here, so you guys are in there. All right, can you, can y'all see everybody? We're good. Do you wanna tell us your names real quick? Come down with your... Lily. Sadie. Okay.
And I. Olivia.
Okay, come on down, because they can see you, they don't see you. So you got, so we have, we've made a special proclamation for you all, declaring this Girl Scout Week because you've worked so very hard this week, and we're gonna let you celebrate all week long. You know what that means? You get to stay up till nine o'clock, and you don't have to go to school on Saturday. Actually, you don't have to go to school Sunday either, how about that? All right. Okay, everybody, are y'all selling cookies right now?
Yes, sir.
Yeah. So, I mean, I would, I would get all these people up to the forty week and say, hey, have you gotten your cookies yet? Right? Because this is big stuff.
If you haven't, please let us know.
So, we had ordered, we've been promising for a very long time that we would have very special patches, because you all get patches when you do something for the Girl Scouts, right? You have like, Boy Scouts have the merit badges, y'all call them?
They're called merit badges.
Ooh, that sounds so much cooler than merit badges. So, we have those, they haven't come in yet, and they're coming in...
We'll be here for the April meeting.
Okay, so, do you guys wanna come back to the April meeting and get your stuff? You don't have to, we will get them to you, I promise you. That lady right there, she's in charge of them all. So, if you can't come back, we'll get them for you. But if you can, we would love to have you back, so we can give you your patches for April meeting, so we'll get your leader and your parents to tell them to stay away, and she will make sure we get them. Cool? All right, and we really appreciate you guys coming, and this is for you, so they wanna take a picture of you. Do you all wanna come down, so we can see all of you right here in the front? And then you all hope you're coming with me, look at this way. Well, come down, somebody gets to stand in the middle. Right here. Anyone come stand in the middle? Stand in the middle, and you hold that open, so everybody can see. Come around on this side, and get on both sides. Come around right here. Okay, everybody squeeze in, squeeze in, squeeze on in. Everybody good? Okay, say cheese. Okay, all right, let's give her a round of applause. Man.
Hear that, because they have two not driving.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. You have to share that with everybody. We can't, so we'll see y'all, if you can't come back to that next meeting, we'd love to have you back. We've been promising those patches for eight years, it was Johnny's first time making a promise.
Thanks, go ahead.
Yeah, thank y'all for taking the time to come. Okay, item B on our agenda, Ms. Edith Bird from 626 South Sixth Street is here to discuss stormwater issues. Is Ms. Bird not here? Ms. Bird's not here, okay, so we'll just table that, maybe she'll come a little bit later. All right, item E on our agenda is the Lincoln Village complex proposal. Bishop Luzon is here. Bishop, do you wanna come forward and state your name and address for the record, and bring anybody from your team that you wish to come?
Welcome. This is Tracy Luzon, pastor of Tabernacle Faith Outreach Ministries Incorporated. I have with me my wife, Karen Luzon, she is also my assistant pastor as well. And, welcome, glad to have you.
Thank you, thank you so much for having us, and with us on your agenda. We have a vision for the community in Hartsville, sitting around where the Lincoln Village Apartments are located. I, my wife is, this is her home. I'm originally born and raised in Florence, but this is where I got my start, as far as in church, this is where I made her, I named her Alson, and married her. And so...
So that was the best decision you made.
Absolutely.
What's your second?
We've been married twenty years, so we, we've been looking at this Lincoln Village property and our ministry, what we, we're more centered towards outreach, trying to give back to the community in terms of providing affordable housing, and when I say affordable, I mean to where someone can pay their rent and have money to spend in the city of Hartsville. Because the more money that we can save them on their housing, they'll have money to spend in the community. And so, that's one of the proposals that I wanted to present to you concerning the Lincoln Village property. We have, this will be considered phase one, I wanted to put quiet apartments on the, on the property, and these apartments will be, I say state of the art, but they'll be safe and affordable, they'll all be installed, have the sprinkler systems installed, so the community will be safe. I noticed out there on that property, they have cameras and everything out there now. But what we were looking at is not only providing affordable housing, but also during the construction of these apartments, it'll create jobs. There are people that have skills in the community, it would give us an opportunity to put them to work. There are young people in the community where they're out committing crimes and violence, we can teach them a trade, they can, we have skilled tradesmen on site to where they can work with someone and learn a trade and become better citizens and productive members in their community. And so, this is, this is what we were looking at. It's a, it's a huge goal, but we're taking it in phases, because I feel that if we can, if we can utilize this property to provide the affordable housing, create the jobs, have more money brought into the community, there are a lot of people that have moved away from Hartsville that would love to come back, but they don't have anything to come back to. And so, we want to, we want to give them something to come back to, and providing this, this service, I feel like it would, it would encourage them to, to come back home, and when you bring them back home, then you're bringing more money back home. Most of them are in Charlotte and Georgia, some are in Florence. If we can, if we can get them to come back home and allow them to have a sense of pride for where they came from, and they can say, well, I remember this property right here for what it used to be, but look at it now, we, we have a beacon of hope now, it's just, it's about a ghost town, is what most people consider Hartsville now. I remember Hartsville back when I was in high school playing football, and I remember Hartsville used to be a very thriving city, and I would love to see that, and that is my heart, that is my wife's heart, is to, is to come into the community and, and do whatever we can to make our mark and to, and to show that there is someone that cares about the city, that cares about the community, that, that cares about the well-being of those that are in the community. And, you know, that's, that's what we're about. We are nonprofits, following secret organization, and we don't make any money off of this. We, whatever proceeds are received during this phase of, of work, it goes right back into the organization. We, we are not here to line our pockets, but we, but we want to, we want to, as it says, make Hartsville great again, you know, and, and bring that hope and bring that light back into, into the community. And I feel like with that, it would probably, I say probably, it would, it would reduce the crime rate in, in the area, because people will, will, will have that community mindset, that somebody from the outside came in, and they brought us hope, and we're not gonna allow anything to cause that to be ruined. And so, that's, that's what we are, we are after, and I do pray and solicit your help as we, as we make this our service, as we make this our goal, to come into Hartsville as a newly established ministry for this area, to, to show that there are people that actually care about the community and want to see things done, to, to help somebody else. It's, it's time to start giving back, and, and I think that there's no greater time than now to show that it's, it's time to start giving back to, to those that are best fortunate, because some people, they've had it well all their lives, some people fell by the wayside, and they just need, they just need that, that helping hand, and to help them get back on their feet, and I feel like this, with this piece of property, I feel like it would help to get a lot of people back on their feet, to where they can, they can be productive and, and do things that they would not have normally been able to do.
So, Bishop, if I may, just took a few questions to help talk through this project. You said your church is new to the area. How long have y'all been here?
We just opened up our services here, about a week, about a month ago. About a month ago, yes.
Where are you located?
Well, right now, we are in a conference center on Landmark. We have property here on Sixth Street that we're going to, that we're going to break ground, and we're going to have a resource center and ministry for right now, but, you know, right now, we're just utilizing the conference center so that we can get fully moved here. We're coming from Goldsboro, North Carolina, but basically moving back home to the area.
Calling Amnesty Day.
Yes.
We can give you a pass, we're moving away, you can come back, we'll welcome you with open arms.
Well, thank you, I receive that.
So, is this your first time doing a project like this?
It is, on this, on this scale, yes. And I have, I have a lot of, a lot of support as far as getting this up off the ground. I have construction, I have builders, I have electricians, I have, I have the team that I need to, to get it started. And so, it's just a matter of, you know, making this presentation to you all and allowing you to see what, what our aim is, and to hope that you will help us to get it off the ground.
So I think that there's a tremendous opportunity here, and there is a tremendous need, as you identified, and we certainly are aware of that. There are some hurdles, that is a huge property, and if I'm gonna be very straight with you, we have, we have been working hard to get it, working hard to figure out how to develop it, and have not had very much success, for a lot of different reasons. None of them are what you brought up, it's all outside developers wanting to take advantage of federal grants and loans and everybody's, you know, nobody's able to make it happen. But it's a tremendous property, and there is risk, you're, you know, a new organization to town, you have a bold vision, which I can certainly appreciate, and you're getting ready to undertake your own building project for your church. So I wonder, A, what your timeframe is, and B, if you're not wanting to do this tomorrow, might there be an opportunity to run a pilot project of a smaller scale? If we're able to identify some valuable properties that would, would be a fit for your project, and also add value to the community, so that we could kind of take a step and see what that looks like, how that works, you know, you brought in a very good plan, which I think is, it's a neat idea about vocational training. We started this when I first got on council, eight and a half, nine years ago, there was a gentleman, I'm gonna forget his name, I swear I never would, who's the guy that used to do, used, knows, no, guy that used to do plaster, did like six or eight houses, you remember him?
Oh, Randy.
Randy, and Randy was a master craftsman. He, he would, he plastered beautiful stuff, up and down the East Coast, and he had nobody left to pass his trade to, and wanted to take on some apprentices to teach them a craft and say, my business is yours, you can take it, because they had nobody to leave it. And it reminded me of that as an opportunity, and so you've identified kind of a niche that I think even the school board is talking about, we had fallen off from this teaching people trade, Quinetta were here, she would be all over that conversation, because that's her new job, is to, to figure out how to make that work. So, you don't have those things flushed out as a whole on paper, I think you've got a commitment from a lot of people, but there's not really a pilot of the program, so here's an opportunity, if we could find maybe the right beginning and work through this, then there would be no reason why you wouldn't be able to be successful and build off of that. It is very much the same thing I think you've done with your church. You found a place to get you into the door, and now you're building on top of that. So while this may not be a step forward to the property that you were hoping to get as a whole, it is certainly not a closed door, as we can maybe take another step together and see what that looks like and move forward. So I think that's a wonderful first step, if you would agree to that, we can, we can take this into consideration, and we can begin looking at what next steps would be. Sure, absolutely. Okay, do you, I defer to the clerk whether, or manager, if this should go to planning next?
I think we can use the power of the properties, any of the corporate land commissions.
Great, okay, so that, that will be next step, so they have your information, and then we'll be back in touch. Any other questions from council?
Bishop Luzon, you have the, Bishop Luzon, I am your council member as far as the, make a deal with the property business, and I see that you have two pieces of property on Sixth Street, one across from Jerusalem Baptist Church, and then the one over by, it used to, it used to be Saint Paul Community Church, but now it's a church of claim, forgetting for not remembering the name. Okay, so which of those properties are you intending to start to build your church on?
Well, we're gonna use the, the piece right across from Jerusalem, it's, it's basically gonna be the resource center, but we'll hold worship services in this location, this is, this is a temporary location, but our vision is far larger than this piece of property. So we wanna get a building there to get the resource center going, and we'll hold worship services in there, and this gives us an opportunity to provide services in the community, those that need help with violence or disabilities, those that need help with social services, those type aspects, pointing them in the direction of jobs, that's the purpose of getting the resource centers started, but yeah, this is gonna be right there, that's just temporary.
Let me ask you this question. With Jerusalem across the street from the location that you're talking about, could you consider another location for the resource center?
I could.
The, the reason I say that is because Jerusalem desperately needs parking space, and you've heard it said, they paid paradise to put up a parking lot. Well, maybe they have, we have a big event, a couple Saturdays, and I was afraid that people were gonna get bogged down, you know, it was gonna be muddy because it rained that Friday, you know, the day before, and that's why I asked, because you got that piece of property out of the corporate land commission, and the other piece out of the corporate land commission, and so I was wondering if at all possible that we could just get other locations within the corporate land commission, if you would consider that, that's what I'm asking you to consider.
So why don't we include you in on that meeting?
Sure.
Okay, all right, anything further? Bishop, thank you for coming.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Items, item five on the agenda is management's update, I'm managing...
We just have several introductions of employees. Chief Luzon.
I'm thirty percent, two new firefighters for City of Hartsville Fire Department tonight. First of all, I've got Mr. Justin Chandler, and second, I've got Joshua Hatchett.
Glad to have you guys aboard. And tell me where you're coming from?
I was gonna tell you that, but I'll let you...
Okay, chief said you got fired.
We told the chief, I lived in Lamar before I was employed here, I worked for City of Hartsville Fire Department for a little over five years. And I live in Sheraw, and I was with Sheraw about signing that up.
Do any, either of you know what the friction law? Do any, either of you know what the friction law is on four-inch hose pumping at two hundred and fifty?
I got a hat on.
And that part of the test, I was blackberry. Yeah, Greg does, that's good. If I don't see Greg get the fire out. Thank you guys, it's great to have you, um, sitting Hartsville team, so look forward to seeing you.
Thank you.
Next we have.
Russ.
I'd introduce Victor Addison, he's a newest hard-looking employee to sanitation.
Victor is a total package. Shirt says so.
He said, "Polyethics make you sweat out there."
Man?
You see the wide answer, right?
That's right. What, so you're going to work with it?
Sanitation.
Sanitation. What will you be doing?
Taking up the after ashes.
Well, we had this conversation last week about, um, somebody was complaining about, um, how hard they had it working in like, when it was hot or when it was cold, and we said, "I know some guys that work on the back of the truck that pick up trash every day, and I've never heard any of them complain about it, too high a toll." So thank you for what you do for the city. It is the most important job, I can promise you.
Yes, sir.
It is also the hardest to convince my kids, even though we got the app, that their duty is to take the trash from point A to the road, right? So I might need you stop by the house and explain.
That's why we take you down to work.
That's right. Well, welcome to the team, we're excited to have you. I wish you the best of, uh, luck.
Thank y'all for having me.
And stay long enough that maybe you could advance from the back of the truck to driving the truck.
He's, he's working on it.
I'm working on it, I'm waiting, I'm waiting on it to take you here.
No, I gotta be honest with you, if you're gonna drive a piece of equipment that big, you need to go tell those boys and like, drive it, you know, eighty miles an hour, center of town, the lights are playing.
No, no, no.
Oh, it's not eighty, I'm sorry. Technically, the truck doesn't go eighty, that's a ruin.
It's off the seat.
My brother actually, um, drives trucks right now, and so when he was a teenager, he worked for City of Hartsville, uh, for sanitation department, and we have conversations about that right now at twelve o'clock at night, and we'd be just laughing about the fun he had, you know, what we did, so you, it's not where you start, it's where you finish.
Yes, sir.
I'm reminded of a former mayor that used to, to throw away his empty beer bottles so that no one in the city sanitation would know how much he was drinking by looking at the recycling every night.
Look, that's don't, don't build into the form there.
His picture's back there, he's the youngest. All right, thank you for walking into the team, glad to have you. Anybody else?
Yes, Adam Riddle.
Uh, I have a dark parts record, I would like to introduce my new parks facility supervisor, Ken Stewart.
Ken, wanna tell us more about yourself?
Uh, I'm from Hartsville originally, been interlocked, been back, and I'm just glad to have this opportunity. You know, I came with it.
Come with a pretty strong reputation, so we're glad to have you on our team.
I saw something inside.
They're questionable people. I was trying to hit him up for some, he did the, uh, you did the sprinkler system in the yard, which I was renting, and I keep running over the sprinkler head, uh, perhaps you would have that conversation, and he was just shaking his head like, "This is not my problem, I just need, I just need some advice." We're glad to have you onboard, uh, you're gonna really enjoy working for the city, so, uh, and you do come with a pretty strong reputation, so we're glad to have you. Yep, thank you.
All right, Rebecca. Thank you. Funny story, you know?
No.
He's not new, but I thought we should introduce the newest member of the HR team, because when we, um, said we had a need for an employee advocate, being that we're bringing Water Park in-house, so to speak, I think you guys all know what that means, um, we knew we were gonna need some support, and Kelly thought it would be a good idea to come and join the team, so I yanked him up, and it was a good decision, so, um, I stole from the police department.
Oh, man, they're probably happy with you.
There's still some bitterness.
But I know he's gonna do, um, a great job, he agreed to sell his soul to the summer gods and then support the rest of the city during the off-season, so.
And you've given him a new office?
Yes, but we just started looking like a dungeon, so we're gonna have to fix it a little, fix it up a little bit, but.
I did a double take when I walked, I was looking for the filing cabinets.
Yeah, yeah, the good news is he doesn't have to sit on the copier, we actually were able to work that out, so.
Did they try to pull that on you, like, "Oh, here's your office, and you've got your own copier"?
That was after I accepted the position.
Well, speaking of strong reputations, right, Ashland, uh, Ashland credibility is pretty strong in, in my family, for sure. Uh, so we're glad to have you onboard, congratulations on a new chapter in your life.
Thank you.
You're gonna have a good time out there, and, um, you know, doing that job will make a difference. Those hundred and thirty or so kids that we employ, uh, they're neat, neat people to work with. I've been banned from going back.
He's going to enforce that, by the way.
All right, I'm tired, I was retired from going back, but I miss it, uh, that's a neat place to, to be out there. It's nice to have that in-house now.
Yes, and so this, we're gonna be supported by, um, the days that we need to let him go home and regroup. I'm not even gonna call it day off, because if I know Kelly, he'll be thinking about it while he's home, but the days he needs to either do that or, or work on his sunburn, um, Ace and I will take turns being out there so that, and while the park is open, there'll be HR representation to, to support the team.
I just wanna be there when that conversation happens, when you say, "Honey, I gotta go into work today at the water park, and it's Saturday," and then she says, "Really?", well, somebody's gotta check on things, right?
It's gonna be my answer.
So you can have the park, while the park is open, to advocate for the employee.
Correct.
Got you.
So that's where you will find him, he'll be dedicated to that task, so right now, he's, he's onboarding with the team. Um, then when Water Park activities are done, then he'll help support whatever other projects we have going, because we always do. Um, and then when it's time to revamp for season three, that would be his focus, and he'll keep me from going crazy.
And you're gonna be cross-trained too, right, for the, all of the, um, equipment stuff?
I took my CPR class yesterday, and I'm going to a pool.
CPO.
CPO.
CPO, yeah.
And I'm going to a pool tech class, I think April, so, yeah, I'm gonna be learning a lot of things, HR one of them, so I'm kinda learning on the fly.
Yeah, good to hear.
Careful, remember you signed confidentiality, you can't talk bad about me.
Well, congratulations.
I have a good, um, supervisor.
Good job.
There you go.
Teaching me ways.
There you go, that's what I need.
I do appreciate the opportunity again with the city.
Well, it's neat to see people, you know, open new chapters in the same, same book, so that's pretty cool. Glad to see you moving and, uh, continually heading back, so, congratulations.
Thank you.
And I will see you this summer, if we don't see you in the former copy room, or that. All right, madam manager, anything else?
Uh, our newest council member, do you wanna invite councilwoman about the event?
I would, thank you very much. On, uh, two weeks from tonight, March twenty-sixth.
Hold on, go ahead, yes, go ahead.
I just wanted to acknowledge the dates that I was gonna do this, I meant to do it when I was speaking.
She already, yeah, she already went out there. Sorry. No, it's fine. Uh, yeah, on Tuesday, March twenty-sixth, at Walton Park, from six o'clock in the afternoon until seven-thirty, uh, everyone actually is invited, we're going to have conversations with a cop. We have three of our officers who will be there, uh, Mayor Potem Andrews and I are putting that on together jointly, districts four and district six, but certainly I'm sure that anyone in the city who would like to come and just hear more about community policing, hear about some things that we as citizens can do to make the police's job as easy as possible and everything, and just citizen responsibility. We'll have question and answer, I believe the mayor may make an appearance there, but I invite you to come. We hope for that to be the first of a series of many things, is citizen involvement and engagement.
Again.
Tuesday, March twenty-sixth, six P.M. until seven-thirty P.M. at Walton Park.
And I overlooked one new hire.
Oh.
Jordan, sorry about that, they weren't sitting side by side.
I know, I know. So I have the pleasure of introducing Samantha Martina, she is the new special events coordinator. You're having the pleasure to work with her, it brings me along, um, gonna tell them all a little bit about yourself? Yep, so I'm local here from Hartsville, um, I'm coming from Sonoco Products, um, I hit the ground running, so I'm excited, and I'll be helping prepare for your event on Sunday.
Wait, so your mom is Miss Martina that you spoke, oh my gosh.
Yeah.
There it is.
I can't spell her.
Yes, yes, that's my mom, she's not tired, but, yeah, she's.
Mom, you look the best.
Yep.
Well, welcome to the team.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
That was a, a really, a funny, um, conversation to listen to, your transition from Sonoco, and your former boss, and your future boss, and all of that funny stuff, so I'm glad that.
He can't, he's losing me.
I know.
He's CPR.
He had very nice.
I'm in the room. Yep.
I know. I saw it today, and I was like, "I wanna be there when this conversation unfolds." Like, "Honey, uh, we're gonna take your number one employee, we're gonna bring her in in a second." But he had some very nice things to say about you. Uh, he said, "The question you always ask yourself about losing an employee is, would you hire McGinn?" He said, "Absolutely," and I said, "Well, I won't tell her that." So welcome to the team, we're glad to have you. Before we move forward, I just thought, um, we've got three of, four of my favorite city people, but, uh, do you ladies have anything you wanna add, like, announcement-wise, Water Park, Main Street, Chamber?
Um, Job Fair for Water Park, last Saturday of this month, so March twenty-third, that's our last one of the season, that's from ten A.M. to three P.M. at the addition, um.
That's for Job Fair?
That's the last Job Fair, we're hiring online now, thanks Rebecca, so application for online at nettown.com/jobs, and then we will open the City of Hartsville orders only on May eighteenth, but open to the fall of November eighteenth.
Okay, cool, that's gonna be, that's, I can't believe that like, season two is here, I think I just broke out of tabs a little bit. Clues, you good, you got anything? Anything we need to know?
The city won Tuesday awards, um, right, Netown Island won for a municipal association award, and Main Street won for bringing an interest of the museum, um, public-private partnership in a community coming together.
Are you gonna accept those?
I'm not sure.
Okay.
About when they actually present the Main Street one, I think the municipal one is different from when the Main Street one is.
Okay, cool, all right, Bert, you good?
We're having an event with you on the nineteenth, partially unprofessional, so don't forget that.
Shameless plug, now everybody, uh, it's like, hey, everybody got anything you wanna talk about?
Yeah.
Um, and I thought that your, uh, economic development event was really a nice event, uh, yeah, you've done a great job so far, we're excited.
Well, and I got a chance to talk to our, um, guest speaker.
Yeah.
About South Hartsville area.
Yeah, he's an interesting, interesting guy.
And then I got a phone call from Murphy, from Mr. McGee, and they had food left over. Well, Teresa, you know, if somebody can get rid of, you can, so I went around the community, feed people in the pouring rain, so, and I went to, went to a location, and they said, "Well, you know, we have something left over, we take it to the, um, Trent House." I said, "Oh, God, I forgot about that," so I went up there, and they were very, very, oh, they just.
Oh, yeah, that was, that's great that that worked out.
Thanks man for that.
Madam manager, anything else?
This is the last meeting before your statement, I can be interested in.
Fine.
I have not, so I'm reminding myself as well. Just a reminder. As a fourteen second, like, four of you could follow.
Am I one of them? Police, I'm on a, I get that envelope at the end of the year with a hundred dollar fine, and I had like forty-seven cents in the bank, and Johnny's like, "What, why do you do this?"
Yes, sir.
So I gave him a reward check, gave away the forty-seven cents.
Yes, sir, you have that.
Oh, good, all right. Okay, nothing further, madam manager. Okay, then let's move into the business of the day. Items on the consent agenda will be received as information without objection, stand approved. Unfinished business, item six on the agenda is public hearing and final reading of ordinance forty-three sixty, the manager will publish.
Authorizing and ratifying the conveyance and transfer of certain real property and other matters relating there to.
Okay, you've heard the reading by time on the presentation of ordinance forty-three sixty. At this time, the chair will open the public hearing, and, um, gosh, haven't done this in so long. At this time, the chair will open the public hearing. If you'd like to be heard on ordinance forty-three sixty, if you'll rise, state your name and address to the record, come to the front, please leave your comments to two minutes or less. I know, I just, I was kidding, I feel like I say this in my sleep now, like, let me know I read it. At this time, the chair will close the public hearing, entertain any options, I mean, any options. Any motions, uh, to adopt ordinance forty-three sixty as a special motion? Mr. Mayor, I would like to make the decision to adopt ordinance forty-three sixty.
Second.
There's a motion of seconds, is there any discussion on ordinance forty-three sixty?
Yes.
Madam?
Mr. Mayor?
Madam?
I'd like to, uh, say that I would wish that the, um, Development Corporation would really take a look at South Hartsville area to see what it is that we can do there to do some economic growth there.
So, um, uh, the council, Quinella and I had a conversation, um, just prior to the start about this, and I really do think there may be some opportunities to utilize the Development Corporation, uh, to deal with some of the property that we're just not sure what to do with, um, specifically, you know, Lincoln Village is a wonderful opportunity. I know Councilman Gammich has showed some interest, um, as we all have over time, and, uh, maybe we should further that discussion about the Development Corporation getting involved, um, because there is a, a lot of flexibility in that, um, and we can rely on some of the expertise that's on that board, not me. And then the other question that came up, the, um, city manager and Councilman McGee, prior to the start, was, um, maybe we should explore moving the corner property next to Canal into the Development Corporation or further development as a gateway to Railroad Avenue, I hate that Casey left, because that would certainly enhance, um, his development. I won't go into the, to the epiphany I had about property, but essentially, we've been looking at the corner property as the gateway, and realistically, having gone and walked, uh, for the three-hundred-thousandth time with one of the, the, uh, planning grad students that came to Hartsville this last weekend, to look at our, uh, to look at our plan, who was a part of the, uh, Mayor, Mayor Rowley, uh, Joe Rowley Mayor's Institute on Design Fellowship, um, she really had some great ideas, and one of those, uh, conversations sparked the idea that the gateway is Railroad Avenue, um, it's the logical next, uh, thing that we can, can work off of, so I'd like to further that conversation, end with the opportunity for Lincoln Village, as well as continuing the conversation about the abandoned properties, uh, could be such an asset to, uh, some really formulated plans for what would work best. So, uh, we'll put that into action for our next meeting, and we'll work on getting something to the table. Okay, anything further on discussion? Hearing that on our favor, saying if I would say no, opposed by no? The odds have it. Item seven on the agenda is public hearing and final reading of forty-three sixty-one, the manager will publish.
Ordinance to authorize the sale of tax map parcel number zero-five-seven-zero-three-zero-one-zero-zero-five at one-twenty West Washington Street, consisting of point seven-six-nine acres to Darlington County Hattie Tapper Elementary.
Okay, you've heard the reading by time on the presentation of ordinance forty-three sixty-one, at this time, the chair will open the public hearing. If you'd like to be heard on ordinance forty-three sixty-one, if you'll rise, state your name and address to the record, come to the front, and please leave your comments to two minutes or less. And hearing that there are none, the chair will close the public hearing and entertain any motions to adopt.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion that we can adopt ordinance forty-three sixty-one.
Good, very, motion of second, any discussion?
I had the opportunity to go there for the first time to get my light bulbs, and I got to where the light bulbs were, and I thought I had to pay there, and then there was a line over there that had to wait in to pay. But I did find out that the bulbs that they were offering, those bulbs will be there along with other products that they have for the rest of the year.
Oh, good.
So if anybody didn't get a chance to go, um, on that Friday, you cannot go at your leisure. That's what, um, I was talking.
We'll spread that word.
Thank you.
All right, any further discussion? Hearing that on our favor, saying if I would say no, opposed by no? The odds have it. Item eight on the agenda is public hearing and final reading of ordinance forty-three. and final reading of ordinance forty-three sixty-two. The manager will publish.
To annex an approximately one-acre parcel of land tax map number zero-five-seven-zero-eight-zero-one-zero-zero-one, located at thirteen-hundred South Fourth Street into the city limits of Hartsville.
Okay, you've heard the reading by time on the presentation of ordinance forty-three sixty-two. At this time, the chair will move to closing public hearing. If you'd like to be heard on ordinance forty-three sixty-two, if you'd rise, state your name and address to the record. Please leave your comments to two minutes or less. And hearing that there are none, the chair will move to closing public hearing and entertain a motion to adopt. Mr. Mayor, make a motion to adopt ordinance forty-three sixty-two.
Second.
There's a motion of second. Is there any discussion on the ordinance? Hearing none in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by nay? The ayes have it. All right, moving, oh, not now. Moving into new business. Item nine on the agenda is Resolution three-dash-nineteen-dash-oh-one. A resolution for approval of bid award for Pine Ridge Pump Station renovations. Is there a motion? Seven.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Hearing none in all, Madam?
That was the recommended, I see we had what, about five, six?
Ross, do you want to address?
Yes, it is a, it was bid by an engineering, and that was the recommended team to do the renovations.
How often do renovations like this take place? Every time I get some money to do it. This is a special one that we, it was an agreement that we had voted on earlier in last, well, late last year. We do, we do them when we can. We actually have one we're working with Shannon on now to rehabilitate South Park of the station.
This will all be reimbursed by due currency.
Yes.
And we're within budget of what we agreed on.
Okay, there's nothing further than all in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed by nay? Resolution passes. Item ten on the agenda is Resolution three-dash-nineteen-dash-oh-two. A resolution for approval of a bid award to the Pine Ridge Pump Station force main and air release valve replacement. Valves replacement. Is there a motion to adopt? Seven.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Russ? No, I'm just kidding. I thought it was the same one. I've read it twice. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none in all, signify by saying aye. Opposed by nay? The ayes have it. Item eleven on the agenda is Resolution three-dash-nineteen-dash-oh-three. A resolution for approval for the City of Hartsville to enter into a memorandum of agreement with Main Street, South Carolina. Is there a motion?
Motion to adopt Resolution, uh, ordinance forty-two-eight.
Is there?
Thirty-nine. Three-nineteen.
Could you guys switch back chairs? If anyone understood that motion, could someone second it?
Motion to adopt Resolution thirty-nine-teen-oh-three.
All right. There's a motion of second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none in all, in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed by nay? The ayes have it. Item twelve on the agenda is first reading of ordinance forty-three sixty-three. The manager will publish.
To amend at least to U.S. Cellular for their installation of cellular equipment on the McDonald's and Jerry's water tower.
Okay, you've heard the reading by time on the presentation of ordinance forty-three sixty-three. The chair will entertain a motion to adopt. Mr. Mayor, make a motion to adopt ordinance forty-three sixty-three.
Second.
There's a motion of second. Is there any discussion on ordinance forty-three sixty-three?
Yes.
Madam?
Mr. Mayor, do we have any idea what revenue increase that we're looking at that would be going to the general fund?
The percentage or the total?
It would not go to the general fund. So these go to the water and sewer fund because it's on their equipment.
Water and sewer tower.
To answer the question, it'd be an increase of six thousand dollars per year.
All right. Good to see that. Thank you, sir.
Okay. Any further discussion? Hearing none in all, in favor, first reading, signify by saying aye. Opposed by nay? The ayes have it. Item thirteen on the agenda is a motion to enter executive session pursuant to the South Carolina Code of Information Act, section thirty-four-seven, paragraph A, sub-paragraph one, for discussion of appointments to council committees. Is there such a motion?
Seven.
There is discussion. Hearing none in all, in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed by nay? The ayes have it. Stand at recess for five minutes.